Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to start the meeting. Please stand forth plats to the flag. My clerk of reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just busy talking here.
To the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, the 28th day of November. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael Hoywanka, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Thomas Pogun Jr., Acting School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
President.
Trustee Crewden.
President.
Trustee Finerty.
President.
Trustee Lawanda.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Velato.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
And President Broderick.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan. Before we start, I'd just like to congratulate, as I know, we just had an election this month for the Board of Education. And I see Jody Cassai said I'd like to congratulate her. I'd like to congratulate Amy Finerty. And for the one-year term, Mike Mokehi. I'd just like to thank everyone else that ran. I think it shows a wonderful thing for the City of Bayonne that so many people had the interest of our children and wanted to help out here, so I thought that was a very healthy election. So, thank you once again.
And we'd like to also congratulate our Board President, who was the highest vote getter in the election. That must mean something.
I have a lot of pride.
Moving on to the agenda, I'd like to start with our approval of minutes and our acceptance of communications. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So on that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo.
No.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have a commendation I'd like to read into the record. Whereas Michelle Halsley, lifelong Bayonne resident, alumnus of Bayonne High School and parent of two, is using her time, energy, and resources to support the students of Bayonne through manufacturing inspirational vinyl decals and displaying the same in Lincoln Community, Woodrow Wilson, Henry Harris, Philip Roome, and John Bailey Schools. And whereas Ms. Halsley is currently preparing additional decals for Mary J. Donahue and Washington Community School, and is working with eighth-grade students to prepare special words of wisdom pertaining to graduation. Whereas Ms. Halsley's project is helping to provide a positive environment in our schools, imparting wisdom and encouragement while striving to encourage respect and confidence in the children of Bayonne. Now therefore be it resolved that Central Office Administration and the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend Michelle Halsley for being an agent of change through her dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service, given freely to the children of the Bayonne Board of Education, and this is by the Committee of the Hall.
Answer any questions.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You get to sit in the big chair. Congratulations. You want to say anything?
Thank you.
Go on.
I started this project because I saw a lot of kids that didn't have the support at home. I know a couple of kids that were going through some hard times, some whose parents were never around, didn't back them up. I wanted them to go into school and be encouraged and maybe read some things that they don't hear at home. I still have a lot of work to do. Recently, I was invited to work for Westside High School. And for any of you who don't know that, you might have seen on YouTube the Ellen video, the principal went on the Ellen Show because he installed laundry machines in the school. So I was fortunate to work with them. They're doing a lot of things in the school. Hopefully, some of that will come into Bayonne schools so we could support our students more. And we could see what else we can come up with for all the kids in the long run.
Thank you. Melissa Jamie, I want a copy of that. I want a copy of that. Moving along, I'd like to continue with our agenda.
Thank you.
We'll start with our curriculum instruction and policy, Resolutions A and A1 to, and we've included in A20. I will read that briefly into the record. Original workshop and public meeting was scheduled for Thursday, December 20th, is now being changed. The new date will be Tuesday, December 18th. All our times stay the same. So we've added A20 to the agenda. It's changing our December meeting date, public meeting date, from December 20th to December 18th.
I got it, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second on our curriculum agenda. Let's see, Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Moving ahead, I'll start with Finance, our B resolutions. I'd just like to make a note that Resolution B6 is moving to the non-consent portion of the meeting. So our Finance Agenda, B1, all the way to B11. B6 is being put on non-consent, and as a reminder, all our resolutions are on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second on the Finance Agenda. Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Moving along, our Resolutions for Personnel. Resolution C1 to C24. Resolution C2 is being moved to non-consent. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I'll make a second.
So I have a motion and second on the Personnel Agenda. On that motion and second, Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, I will start with Resolution C2. It is on our back bulletin board. It is our monthly resolution for community education. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second on Resolution C2. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Abstain.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
We have Resolution B6, which was moved to non-consent. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education advertised bids on October 3rd, 2018, to be opened on October 16th, 2018, and the Board has examined said bid proposals as summarized below. It should be noted that there was only one bid, and rejects the sole bid as the Board has determined the price per hour to be too high. Furthermore, authorizes the Acting Business Administrator to rebid the services. The bid opening was Tuesday, October 16th, at 1:00 PM. It was for telecommunication services, telephone, and data wiring. Be it further resolved that the Board President and Board Secretary sign on behalf of this Board Counsel, approve, save, deform, this resolution is effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on B6. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And we have one additional resolution, which I guess we will call D1. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has suspended without pay the employee named on Schedule A attached. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has heard from the employee and his representative regarding this matter, now be it hereby resolved this 28th day of November, that the said employee is terminated from his position with the Bayonne Public School District. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
On that motion and second, on Resolution D1, Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Crewden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. President, that's all I have for resolutions, but I do have some questions from the audience. How about Frank Trina, 69 Boatworks Drive, Indoor Percussion? Mr. DeAngelo, I'm throwing your card out there. Your card? Frank, you have three minutes.
Can't hear you. Put the microphone up, please. Thank you, that's good.
Yes. I came here to talk about that program that Dr. Dambly did, and that's true, it's quite a little bit upsetting to hear it towards, I mean, with such a short notice, it's true that there is other program that he could draw to replace that program, however, we were told recently that the program has terminated. So that's probably what was so pretty awesome, or his parents, we not being too active with that termination. Going back to the meeting that took place, it's true that we were presented with, you know, the vision of the band director, and at the end of the meeting, it was, it ended with the question of if everybody was happy with that meeting, and in the end, there's nothing we could do, it was a decision that was made, so also with voice of disappointment. I think the point was that, you know, there was not much being done, and that's probably why you didn't hear about that issue during the next two weeks that followed the meeting. Personally, I think that, again, I could talk about that program, the same way that people talk against the program, I just think it's unfortunate that there was not a solution to keep that program continuing, and that's all I have for you guys, you know, today. But I think it's really important to mention that there was a big disappointment, and looking at it, that was kind of a successful program that kind of, you know, got terminated, and we'll see what happens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker on the same topic is Jeanette Trinault, 69 Boatworks Drive.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Trinault, and I'm here as band parent. I, like my husband, were at the meeting, and it's true that at the end of the meeting, Molly asked if everybody was happy with the solution, and many said they weren't, and Mr. Craig, as he stated here, said that not everybody could be happy. I just wanted to state Indoor Percussion, prior to Ms. Hitchell in 2017, they won eight out of 16 at the WGI competition against high schools from the Northeast, ranging from Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Connecticut. In another WGI, 10 out of 21 at another competition in the same season. Marching Band season when Ms. Hitchell taking over, they did very poorly, just as her first indoor season. They came in second to last or last at each marching band competition during her first season last year. This season, obviously, she did a lot better, and we're all really proud and congratulate her for bringing the band to this, to winning second. She stated percussion won award at the last band competition, and when the entire band itself came in second place in the entire state. The percussion band members, marching band, were looking so, looking forward to keeping up the momentum from doing so well in the marching band last competition, and wanted to just jump into indoor, just like she stated. They felt very let down in the midst of being so happy. They all loved the showmanship, costumes, moves, similar to marching band, and scenery, and thematic nature of indoor, and most not, most are not interested in a more sedate concert band, which is not available after school, and will not service many. Indoor is very intense, about seventeen and a half hours per week, it's a group team building activity, and one and a half hour week of clinic that was thrown out at the, on the fly at the last meeting with the parents by Eduardo to calm all the tensions in the room. We don't think necessarily is going to, like, make up for the intense experience that indoor always provides.
Mrs. Trinault, just so you don't run out of time, it's time to start to wrap up.
Ms. Hitchell at the meeting, she was saying that she wouldn't mind if kids went out of town to audition and be a part of private indoor bands, but I think it's probably a little bit too late, and she said that she supported that. We all really like information on viable opportunities, since that was her, one of the things that she kept saying to us during the meeting, that she didn't care, and she would be, she would be supportive of kids doing that. So we'd really like to know, is that really true? Because she did put that out there as a compromise, to have the kids go out of town, even though I don't think they should have to do that.
Mrs. Trinault, I'm sorry, I apologize for cutting you off, but that is your three-minute...
We will get back to you on that, that question, no.
That's the first I've heard of that. I will research.
Well, Dr. Wanko's going to research that question.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, Michelle Halsley, 134 Humphrey Avenue.
I think for a long time, everybody's been trying to put a good example for our children. Most of the trustees, the parents, the people that work in the schools, the teachers. Some things have to change in regard to behaviors. We're all trying to do a lot to better our schools and better our children, teach them right from wrong. However, when video is surfacing of people going into people's apartments, stealing mail, you know, people who sit on the board are acting this way, this is not how we want our children to behave, this is not what they want to be taught. Going forward, I just want a better example set by trustees for our children. Thank you.
How about Melissa Godsky Rodriguez?
Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. I'm not trying to be sarcastic here, but you might want to take that mic back, I'm going to talk about the same subject, in respect, in respect, I'm being honest here. So, first of all, I want to thank the current Bayonne Board of Education for the hard work and time that you all put in. I respect that, which is why I chose to run for it, because all of you, most of you, are respectable role models in this community, so I thank you for that. As most of you know, I'm not typically a complainer, but I have a problem, and I know so many others do as well. One of our current, and I say our, because we voted, current board members seems to feel or think we are above the law, to have complete disregard to the community, to those who voted for him. I'm sure you're all aware of actions by Michael Alonzo during the election. It's not acceptable.
What does this have to do with the Board of Ed?
Can I finish?
What does this have to do with the Board of Ed? And if you were behind that stunt, I would like to know. Were you behind the stunt?
Who was behind the stunt? Who was behind that stunt to put all the lyrics of "Hold On" in my house?
That wasn't my house.
Trustee Alonzo.
Let me make a general announcement.
We're going to come back with the card.
Let me just make a general announcement. This won't cut your time, okay? The Board is well aware of the video and photograph that surfaced, all right? That's not necessarily evidence of anything that occurred, because there's no one who's brought forth any evidence other than a photograph. There's nothing other, exactly, but there's no person that's come forward and took the video, no person's come forward who witnessed anything, other than the video that shows Karen Page.
Excuse me, folks. We don't go back and forth. If you wanted to ask a question, you would have wrote a card. Please let our attorney finish.
So we don't want to take issue with anyone who comes up here and accuses any trustee of theft or crime when it's not proven and has nothing been charged. Understood?
Absolutely. Hundred percent agree with you. I don't disagree with you at all.
You can continue.
So I want to make it clear that what you guys do up there, it's not a joke, it's not a game, takes a lot of time. It's a hard job. I hundred percent believe that. I'm proud of the new people who've been elected to this Board as well. I just don't believe that that's a representation of our community, and I'm sure many people don't think that as well. Students and adults look up to those who are in elected roles, regardless of what role you are elected to. I do not want my son to think that any of those actions are correct for young adult growing up. I believe the public in this community, and I appreciate your response, by the way, because I think people are looking for that, that people are looking for some type of response or, or just clarification that you are aware. I know specifically you cannot talk about that, and I know we are protected conveniently, and so you do get that protection. But it's not a joke, and it's not a hobby, and in my own opinion, it's a very insecure move. I don't believe that any of those actions should have ever taken place regardless of the intent behind it. I just think it's time to rethink your true intentions, your purpose, and your agenda. I would say this isn't it. Time to find a new hobby. Bayonne Board of Education Trustee Michael Alonzo.
So did you say to the national public?
I'm sorry, Mr. Trustee.
Unfortunately, my kids and kids will go to your property, sir, so please give them some respect.
Trustee Alonzo. Trustee Alonzo. Trustee Alonzo, I'm going to say it a third time.
So try to relax a little bit here.
Okay. Our next speaker, Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. First of all, I think it's an embarrassment, the way that you're responding to a young lady. I think it's an embarrassment as a man to sit here and see you talk like that to her. You're a piece of crap.
All I did was ask her if she was behind it. I mean, if you have any information, please come forward with it.
At this time, I think I can shut this speaker down, just for the card.
Absolutely. If anyone does that again, you're going to be asked to leave. You don't have a right to come up here and curse at the trustees or disrespect.
Next up, Mr. Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, 261 North Plainfield, New Jersey.
So I want to, I want to acknowledge the Board for creating a structure and a set of policies that make it almost impossible to get new information or figure out what you've done with what you've been given, so it's almost impossible to introduce new information. I also want to thank the Board from the bottom of my heart to granting me 30 minutes a year, oh, excuse me, 36 minutes a year if I come on July and August, and frankly, my commitment to this school district is not strong enough that I'm willing to give on my vacation to get six more minutes, okay? I figured it's going to take me about six years to go through what I want to say at that point. So, also, you have gotten an article, and unfortunately, I, it was all cut up and pasted, and when you read it, it won't make much sense to you. I have the original copy that helps you organize it spatially so you can kind of see what's going on. If you'd like that, I'll be happy to give it to you, but I don't think you're going to get much out of the 34 pages that was cut up. So, when I get frustrated, I read a poem. When I'm sitting in my classroom about to go nuts from the insanity of this place, I read a poem that kind of refocuses me on what my real job is. And so I'm going to start reading that to you tonight, and I will, you know, finish in other months. The poem is from a collection called "The Meditations on Eighteen Wheels." Truck drivers have a very unique perspective of this country.
Meditations of whom?
Meditations on eighteen wheels.
Oh, on eighteen wheels, thank you.
Yeah. Truck drivers have a very unique perspective of this country, because they travel it over and over again, they meet other people, they have a really good perspective of who the American people are, and so this gives you kind of an idea. It's called, this particular piece is called "Destiny." Somewhere across America, I ride a great deep-throated throbbing beast through wondrous land on eighteen wheels of spinning on ribbons of concrete from sea to shining sea. Many have gone this way, immigrant on wagon wheel pulled by living beast, others on thermodynamic beast of iron and fire, an iron horse that was no horse, belching smoke and steam as it traversed the land on slender rails of sea. it traversed the land on slender rails of sea, steel, from sea to shining sea. Some see as they traverse the land an adversary, a hostile land, but what I feel is the indifference of the land for us, the being ones, the thinking ones, the feeling ones, the wanting ones, the demanding ones, the selfish ones, the unseen ones, the unseen ones, the spoken ones, the dumb ones. This land calls forth freedom, for though it bounds us in its reality, it does not dictate who we might be or what the possibilities. Through the land sound the words of Tom and Abe, magic words, immortal words, transforming words, words from the past, words in the present, words for the future, that grant the speaking of other words, that tell of possibilities not yet so, that they may be so.
Mr. Wyatt, I hate to cut you off, but...
I know, you, I know you don't, no you don't.
We can continue that at the next meeting. I would like to point out to the trustees though, uh, I received a New York, New York Times dated September 6th, 2018, a regular New York Times. There was no way for me to cut and paste that article to get to you trustees tonight. What we wound up doing is we went on the online version of New York Times, went to the article and printed it. That is the 34 pages that you have. It's direct from the New York Times website. Other than that, Mr. Wyatt, I don't know any other way I was to give this to our trustees. If you would like to maybe make copies of the article or whatever way you'd like them to see it, but I figured to save time, at least our trustees would have the ability to each have a copy instead of me passing around a New York Times that each individual trustee was supposed to look at separately, so.
President Broderick? Well, I just wanted to give them a...
Did you give them the cover sheet that explains why in a month of review?
Yes.
It is right on our board communication.
Mr. Wyatt, if I could make a suggestion possibly, I'd like to give you an invitation to our next workshop and maybe come to the workshop and if you want to read the entire poem there, that would be a better situation than...
Open workshop.
The open workshop than at the...
Yeah, I will do that.
So that's on the 18th at 5:30.
Okay, but I also go and request that then the poem be read into the record.
What? I will put the poem in the record, but it won't be read into the record.
That's fine. I, I just so it's in the record, Mr. Wyatt.
Uh, Dr. Maida, I would just like to compliment you and thank you for putting together that packet of 34 pages plus the cover letter. It's 34 plus, 35 pages. So I want to thank you for putting that together for every trustee. That was, um, tremendous amount of work on your part, especially I know you were giving it last minute, so I commend you.
I would like to take props for that, but it was the superintendent's office that assisted me with that.
Thank you very much.
I do not want to take credit for something I didn't do. Okay, uh, all the questions have been heard. Uh, why don't we just take an adjournment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
May I say a word, please? May I say a word, please?
Regarding?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just regarding the stance of being a trustee. I was, like every single one of you in the audience, about four years ago, and my impression of the board was like they were just sitting bobbleheads. Nobody reacted, nobody said anything, and it was just like we just sat here and did this. Now, I've had the experience of sitting on this board for almost three years. Let me assure each and every one of you, this board is not a bunch of bobbleheads. We have guidelines that we must abide by and as Dr. Maida said, this is not an exchange. We may not exchange, but let me assure you, each and every one of us sit for hours and read. We go into that session in that back room and there are very, very heated and quite emotional as well as intellectual discussions. And when we come out here, we have discussed almost every, not almost, every single resolution that is here. We are not bobbleheads. We care, but this is not the place for a question and an answer. We have discussed it and you have trusted us, that's why we're trustees, to make intelligent and good decisions for the community in which we live. Again, I, I can feel your frustration and I can tell you how many times I would like to speak out and say what's on my mind, but there is a code of ethics and there are certain things you may and may not say. We are a very cooperative unit. We work together. Do we disagree in that back room? Yes. Do we discuss? Yes. Do we care? You have no idea how much we care. I just want you to know, we sit here, we take it all in and times I want to stand up and go, yes, you're right. I may not. I've taken a code of ethics, I've sworn by it, and we may not do that at this dais. We may not. But I assure you, we do care, Mr. Wyatt. We do know, Mr. Wyatt and everybody else, we do know and we do care. So please, we're not bobbleheads. Trust me. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Trustee Munoz?
Trustee Llande, seconded by trustee Munoz.
No, 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 I was gonna say...
You wanna make a comment?
No, it's okay, no. Um, I just like to echo what Mr. Finerty said, but I would like to say something about, um, the band situation. Obviously, you know, uh, we spoke, myself and President Broderick and a couple of other board members spoke with Dr. Wanko. We are in the process of, of still discussing that. Nothing is set in stone, it's not over yet. Um, and I just want to commend all the students back there, again, for you guys coming here and showing your passion and I want to tell you, it, it has not fallen on deaf ears. Do not leave here deflated or defeated. You guys are student leaders and you should be very proud of the action that you've taken thus far, so I commend you. And I think everyone on this day has commended you for standing on the road you're leaving. So, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you and then also to Katie, my friend who we volunteered on Thanksgiving Day together. Um, thank you very much for your feedback. It was instrumental in helping making a lot of decisions. So thank you very much. And, um, Mr. Wyatt, I look forward to seeing you at the next workshop, sir. All right? Thank you very much.
So we have a motion from trustee Llande.
Excuse me.
Another, I'm sorry.
In light of what's been going on, in light of the questions that the people seem to have over what our role is with the certain incident that happened with the mail, perhaps Mr. Pascal or could take a, a swat, uh, if I inform the public as to what we are not or are allowed to do as a board, what's our role?
Yeah. Just in terms of, and I think, uh, trustee Ryan, your question is, the board's authority with respect to the photographs and video that were circulating. At this point, there is none, there's, there's no investigation to conduct. The photograph, the video are out there. Um, if more information comes to fruition at some point, it'll be, it may be a separate issue, but at this point, there's nothing for the board to do or take action on.
So I have a motion to adjourn by trustee Llande and I have a second by President Broderick. On that motion and second, trustee Alonso? Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Llande? Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is 8:45, the board will not return. Trustees, we're back in.